Dr. Belsberg, I'm just looking at the clock and I know that somebody's gotta leave at 9:30. Can you, are you up and down in 15 minutes, you think?
I, yes, sure.
That's what a PhD does for me, I know.
Good evening and thank you very much for providing me with the time to share a few of the accomplishments from this year. It's truly a pleasure to be able to highlight the outcomes of the hard work of the Memorial School community. And specifically, I would like to thank the members of the Site Council for their input and efforts in developing the plan, and also thank the Memorial staff for their thoughtful reflections and ongoing dedication to the children of Medfield. As mentioned, one of the themes that we continue to focus on is consistency, both within grade levels and K-5. Our goal work this year maintains that focus, and as you will see, our proposed goals for the 2015-16 school year continue that work. Tonight, I plan to share some of the highlights in the areas of literacy, writing, math, technology, and social competency. And woven throughout those topics are references to our work in the areas of professional development, updates to the facility, student life, and professional, oh, I already mentioned professional development, excuse me. So as I recently shared with you, and again, forgive me for some repetition, this year we transitioned to a full-day kindergarten model as an option for interested families. With 120 students enrolled in six classrooms, the staff has worked diligently to structure their day and adjust their instruction to meet the needs of the students. In addition, our half-day teachers have worked exceptionally hard to continue to provide their students with consistent experiences that align with the full-day curriculum. They are all to be commended for their hard work. As a result of their planning, the teachers were able to assess their students using the DRA and begin guided reading earlier than in the past. And the kindergarten team, as I mentioned to you a couple weeks ago, established a rigorous goal for themselves of 100% of their students to achieve a minimum of three levels of reading growth at the beginning of June. I didn't have that data for you the last time, but as of today, 93% of the children met their goal of three levels of reading growth, which is truly exceptional. The kids who did not, we are continuing to work with them, but I'm proud to say that they also demonstrated areas of growth as well across the board. In addition, as a team, the kindergarten attended training in September to fully implement foundations, which Donna mentioned, is our phonological phonemic awareness program. Initial results have also been extremely positive, including reduced referrals for reading support and positive feedback from the teachers and support staff. So as a result, we plan next year to introduce foundations into the first-grade curriculum. Grade one team actually, just last week, along with reading specialists and special education staff, received professional development, and will begin implementing that program in the fall to continue to strengthen our students' phonetic awareness and phonetic skills. In writing, we have completed the adoption of the Lucy Coughins units of study in both kindergarten and grade one. It was year one of the program for kindergarten, and every teacher worked on a minimum of one unit, familiarizing themselves with the objectives and also introducing the students to the writer's workshop model. Next year, they will fully implement all units, following the curriculum maps that were developed in conjunction with Jamie Callahan. And grade one, it was their second year in this program, they introduced all units and concentrated on implementing common writing assessments and developing exemplars for each of the writing prompts. These were then used as springboards for conversations that resulted in adjustments to instruction that were geared towards improving student learning. Our math focus this year continued, included continuing to work with a math consultant to gain a deeper understanding of the Common Core standards, both horizontally and vertically. We worked on alignment with current programs, supplementing materials as needed, and a focus on vocabulary. Grade one actually set a SMART goal for themselves to tackle problem solving, and they developed common assessments and rubrics, and then collaborated to work to meet the students' needs using best practices. The implementation of guided math instruction continued in both kindergarten and first grade. And next year, as mentioned by my colleagues, we are greatly anticipating the adoption of Envision 2.0, are excited about the alignment and the consistency that it will bring to the K-5 elementary program. With regards to technology this year, we were extremely excited and grateful to have the Memorial School fully wireless. This has offered great opportunities for our students and staff. Thanks to the generosity of CSA and MCP, we have grown the number of iPads and Apple TVs in the building, and currently have a center set of five iPads that are shared between two classrooms in both kindergarten and first grade. And this gives our students and our teachers the opportunity to use these on a daily basis in a variety of different ways. The Apple TVs are currently being installed, so for next year, they are gonna help support the sharing of daily student work, teacher demonstration, and for kids to do projects on them as well, and then be able to share them with their classmates. This year, we've used the iPads for I-Wonder projects, we've used Pebble Go database. The kids have had Skype experiences with other school districts across the United States. And for the first time, Memorial first graders participated in the Hour of Code, which was very exciting for the kids, and they did an amazing job. Professional development also, as mentioned, has been extremely important, has been ongoing. Google workshops, support for Teach Point, which is our online component for the educator evaluation system, and the use of apps to enhance learning are some of our areas of focus. For next year, we will continue to increase the skill, to continue to increase the skill and the comfort level of our staff, so that we can then enhance and expand our students' curriculum opportunities to integrate technology into their learning as responsible digital citizens. The final area that we have continued to work on this year is the social thinking curriculum. And staff members are consistently using this language of the curriculum alongside the open circle curriculum lessons. This year, our school psychologist, Jenna Goldstein, went into every classroom and taught lessons to all of the classrooms. We had a school-wide assembly that was actually led by our preschool students on whole-body listening, which they did an outstanding job. And future goals will include a continued focus on these concepts and the expansion of our school-wide assemblies. In addition, we'd like to hold a parent night to really present an overview of the social skills curriculum to give parents a better understanding, and just, we think it's a great way of enhancing the messages so that we can provide our students with the ability to handle some situations that they may deal with, not only in Memorial but going forward. So in addition to the goals that are previously mentioned, we'll also be focusing on the following areas, which include continuing to integrate the preschool program and its families into the Memorial School community, expanding, as Matt said, expanding the preschool program to offer an extended three- and four-day option. And in August, we're actually going to offer a kindergarten bus orientation to our incoming kindergarten students to help familiarize the kids with the bus, hopefully take away some student and parent anxiety, teach them about bus safety rules and the expectations prior to the start of the school year. So I'm very much looking forward to-
Going on a short ride?
Just, we are, we'll take them on a short ride, they're gonna do a loop from Memorial around Dale Street and then back to Memorial, so that they can have that experience of riding the bus and climbing those stairs, which are easily bigger than they are on the first day of school. It's really an exciting and busy time at the Memorial, and I really couldn't be more excited to be part of it, to work with the children, the staff, and the families, and to work with my wonderful colleagues who I've had an opportunity to get to know so well this year. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to come and share a few of the things that we're working on this year and also going forward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What is the social thinking like, more specifically? What is that? I mean, I kind of know it thematically, but what is it going to?
Sure, so basically what that does, it focuses on concepts in student-friendly language, like whole-body listening, what parts of your body should be on and what should be off when you're actively engaged in listening. It gives names to things that children may be feeling, like red thoughts, those thoughts that you might wanna keep inside your head instead of expressing during the day, green thoughts, the ones that are better to share out loud, and helps kids really identify, it has actually little characters, they're superhero characters, that the kids can identify with, so that when they're dealing with certain social interactions and behaviors, it helps give words to those feelings where they might have a little bit more trouble at a young age doing so.
I might sit on it, sit in on that class.
I know some eighth graders, at least they could use that red thought.
You're welcome anytime.
Those are life skills, and hopefully the other schools would take on a similar, not language, I know, red thought, you know, when you get to Blake, but still, those, you know, in terms of consistency when you get to, okay, fabulous. And I must commend you on the consistency piece, and thank you, Dr. Marsden, for taking leadership on that, because there has been vast improvements, and very grateful.
And I think it's so much more critical than, like, where we have grade-based schools, consistency is so critical, without transitions.
And one teeny piece, first grade, I know they've got the, kindergarten, excuse me, the half-day curriculum now in the full day, just to digest it a bit more, but with that more time, do they get a second recess or at least some playtime? Because kindergarten's still supposed to be fun.
Absolutely. So they have their lunch, like, like grade one does after recess, but during the morning, they have free choice time, so when they come in, they can have an opportunity to make some of those choices that are less structured, if you will, they still have a purpose, but they're less structured. And they also have a lot of opportunity for movement breaks, which when you walk around the hallway, you can see in classrooms that they're getting up, they're stretching, they're doing brain gym and things to really give those bodies an opportunity to get the wiggles out.
We do the same thing at the law firm.
Yes.
Missy, what's the enrollment for full day next year?
Full day is up to 147.
147.
Yeah.
And how many half-days?
And, I'm sorry?
How many half-day students?
Sixteen right now.
Sixteen?
Yeah. We have a total of 151 total for kindergarten currently this year, with 120.
So far.
Right, so far.
So far, yeah, so far. Yep.
A question, Mr. Smith. Is there a motion to approve the Memorial School Improvement Plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Great first year, thanks.
You are also welcome to stay, but I don't know if he's giving you permission, but like, from my perspective, you go home to your family shop.
Absolutely.
A couple things we're gonna go through real quick, Dr. Marsden on school choice.
So each year, as you know, the school committee needs to vote whether or not the district should become a school choice district. So what that means is that if we were a school choice district, we would open up our doors to students from other districts, and we'd have to establish grade levels, number of seats, et cetera, et cetera. And then we would have the student, if they applied, and sometimes it's a lottery, but if they applied to come in, we'd accept those students, and that would come with the tuition of, I guess, is it $5,500, Michael? I think it's $5,500, the tuition for school choice. Medfield has never done that, and I recommend that they don't start. So it's, you know, certainly, there are communities where they make money off this, they have as many kids as they can come in, and they have a nice part of unrestricted revenue that allows them to do things. But I think that certainly are, we should stay with what we've always done here in Medfield, and keep it Medfield kids only and not open our doors to everyone else.
Is this Metco, or what is, what is?
Oh, no, 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 this is just school choice. See, every year you have to vote to either be a school choice and not be a school choice.
Right, right, right. So even with enrollment going down, and schools, for example, the cluster system, whether or not that can survive with lower enrollment, we still wouldn't consider?
Well, that's not gonna hit us until next year or the year after.
Okay.
You know, the clusters, but.
If I can just add my two cents to, with things like the West Street project, we were just at the state hospital meeting, there's so much, you know, so much that could happen with, you know, an influx of students, that I think to ever allow a school choice where we're opening that up, I think it's just not a wise decision.
It can become problematic, no doubt about it.
Do any other schools around us do it?
I think Milis is the closest one, I think. They're the only ones around. Medway might, no, Medway and Milis, they both do.
This doesn't impact the students that we accept in for the tuition-based students that we-
Because it disappoints me.
Right.
No, it does not affect that at all.
Does anybody move the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
I mean, it's definitely something we should consider, if we start seeing enrollment-
Dropping way off.
You know, dropping way off.
How do you, how do you do that? I mean, do they have an application, and you only allow?
So I was involved in a district years ago where we put a full-page ad in the Worcester Telegram that said, "The doors are open," and that's how we did it. And made a pretty good sum of money each year off that.
Aren't the student, the sending-
Big in Central Mass.
The sending districts have to come from schools in need of improvement, don't they? Did I make that up?
No, I mean, it was, yeah, in Central Mass, it's big. It's a big competition in Central Mass, because funding has become an issue for a lot of districts. So when I say that, you know, we would bring in $200,000 to $300,000 a year for that.
But that, but it's only $5,500 a student?
Correct.
I mean, it's not, that's, that's not a lot of money.
It's not.
Doesn't even want to cost us to educate a student.
Right.
So how is that a good idea when it's like half, I mean, how is that making money for the district when it costs you?
So here's how it works, where, you know, many, many years ago, there are different communities that have different strengths, okay? So a neighboring community where I was had hockey and football, so kids with school choice to go play hockey and football. Where I was had a very strong band, so kids would leave other places to come to that. So it's, it's not always academic, it's always, sometimes it's, you know, other offerings that districts have that kids might be interested in. It could be that someone lives 50 miles away from the district, but they work in the same town as a school, and the parents wanna bring their children to that school, because it's easier for them to work, et cetera. So there's those kinds of issues, so.
Is it an application process?
It is, yeah. It is.
No exam or anything?
No. But if, but if we say we have 50 slots open in grade two, and 41 people put their name in, and all 41 get in.
Right.
Yeah, there's no selectivity.
Yeah. You can't say, "I want that kid or this kid," it's, it's either they all get in or you have a lottery, one or the other.
Okay, yes.
Okay, let's skip donations. Do that at the end?
Sure, yeah, you wanna, we'll come back to donations, we'll table it.
We'll figure out old business, and then-
Greg, you wanna jump onto the Dale Street Music?
Sure. So let's jump into the Dale Street Music Pilot, and then we can get to the closeout and the other stuff. So I have a short presentation, just really going over the results of the pilot study, and then just at the end, talk a little bit about what our plans are for next year. But I just wanted to start a little bit with the definition of a pilot, and I just really think that over the last 10 months, this was lost a little bit, that it's a study conducted for the purpose of gaining additional information. You know, certainly there was a lot of discussion around this, and that it truly was a pilot. And if pilots aren't successful, then you don't do them again. You know, and I think that's, you know, where we were coming from the entire time, whether it felt that way or not for folks, that's exactly what we're trying to do. So there was some, definitely some scheduling challenges and changes that impacted the Dale Street Music Program. So in 12, 13 sections of music lessons were cut, doubling the size of classes for lessons. In that same year, grade four ensembles were added, and then the elementary program was also put in the same kind of language program. And then in 14, 15, we implemented the pilot program, that moved ensemble from the student day to before school. So a lot of stuff going on there. Certainly, you know, in the, in the elementary day committee, we've talked a little bit about how some of this has impacted the schedule and created more fragmented instruction and teaching time for teachers at Dale Street. The pilot, again, in September 14, we contracted with Lingam's Educational Consultants to evaluate the pilot. That's a company that has done hundreds of these. I've worked with them probably four or five times in two previous districts. I've never worked with this consultant before, but I've worked with Lingam Consultants before, educational consultants. If you remember on the MCAS presentation, I talked to you a little bit about that in my former district, we were calculating student growth data five years before the state, well, these folks did it for me. So that's the group that I've used, and have a lot of success. I know Michael used them in Denham, you had an open contract with them every year, right? Or you used them for a lot. So, you know, very reputable in terms of what they do, and they did a nice job with this report as well. So the methodology, interviews, focus groups, surveys, and then research from other districts, and then three recommendations came at the end of the study. So two important parts that were included in the study, I think it's worth sharing, the purpose of the report is to evaluate the pilot for the ensemble rehearsal time and its impact, if any, on the music program itself, and on the overall education program in grades four and five. That was the narrow scope that we wanted them to look at. It had no intention to critique the Medfield Music Program, its instructional staff, judge the program's quality, or to question the value of music instruction in general to the development of the whole child. So they kept hearing that as a theme when they were doing, that was never the intent. I mean, certainly we've heard this as a theme this year as well, that was never what, I don't think anyone questions any of that stuff. Great program, certainly great instructors, and the importance of it and the benefits of the whole child. So never, never was that a question during this process. Here's where, you know, the data starts to look, you start to look at participation rates. And, you know, when this program started, I had asked the instructors to, they kept Google Docs on attendance, and I just, you know, looked at it and got a sense of what it was. And we started to see a trend where kids weren't making it. You know, we started seeing things where 20 kids might be absent, or 30 kids might be absent for orchestra practice. So when you look at the data, it says 78 kids, 78% of the kids can be there, well, that leaves a lot of other kids not there, and that's kinda hard to develop an ensemble when you don't have kids there. So let's look at, at some of the data we looked at, we found. So with the band, we looked at 13, 14, and 14, 15, so participation rate and retention rate, you'll see that in 13, 14, a retention rate of 90%. And Doug and I have talked about that, he says normally you get about 10%, 5 to 10% kids that drop out during the process. But if you look at 14, 15, before school, we had a retention rate of only 80%, so certainly below what they'd normally had. Then you get the 88.5% for grade five, and then that goes down to 78. So we see like a 10% dip in retention rate in the program. So that was concerning for the band piece. Orchestra has a, has a better rate of retention, however, you know, one of the things that they found was there were more kids that participated in orchestra that were absent in the morning ensemble. So even though they had a better retention rate, their attendance rate on ensemble wasn't as good as the band was. And then chorus, you see, they actually gained kids there that one year, but, you know, fairly good in 13, 14 for fourth and fifth grade, and you'll see that, you know, certainly in fifth grade, a big drop in the retention rate. So we looked at some of the, this is a study in the focus group data, and this gives you kind of a sense of what the response rate was. So we had 177 parents and grade four and five students, 70 parents of grade three students, 90% of Dale Street teachers, and 10 members of the Medco Music Association participated in either the focus group survey or both. I wanted to kind of, these are some of the high points of the data, and, you know, failed to mention, this is online, by the way, on our website. I know that I sent you a copy, I sent Chris a copy, and Doug a copy, but it is up there on our website. So 76.8% of parents able to get their child to attend regularly on time, based on the data in the survey. 46.8% of those parents indicated that the major obstacle was getting their kid up on time. So that was the major issue of when they weren't getting there on time, was getting their kid up in our bed. 34% of parents cited family organization factors as an obstacle for attendance. So whether it was something going on that morning for a sibling, or, you know, one of the issues that came up, if I was dropping my child off at high school and then getting back to the other side of town, the traffic at 109, those kinds of things, so those were, you know, those were issues. 33.7% of parents indicated that if ensemble was held in the morning, it would impact their decision to continue. So going forward, you know, they went this year, and that's, if you remember in that blog entry in November, I asked folks to, you know, let it play out and give your feedback during this process. So that if it was going to continue in the morning, you know, more than a third of our kids would participate the following year. 40% of parents indicated that ensemble in the morning was, would not be a factor in the decision, but you still have a pretty high percentage of parents that did. And then interesting question here, when asked if ensemble should be held during the day, even though instructional guidelines have become more challenging and rigorous, they answered 55% said yes, 18% said no, and 27% preferred that as sometimes. We had some fourth and fifth grade kids that discontinued the program, that dropped out, so that last slide we talked about. And a quarter of them said that before school was the main reason why, and just keep in mind, it's only 7% of the kids. So one person that makes something different here, changes it a lot, but I think it's valid to take a look at it. 25% said before school was the main reason, 50% said before school was a strong factor, and then 25% it was no factor in the decision of why they did not continue into the program. As part of both surveys, the grades four and five, in grade three, there was some narrative pieces where they could give feedback. So if ensembles were outside the school day then, you know, just to kinda get a sense of, you know, what parents are thinking if it were gonna be outside of the school day. 36 parents responded, and this is out of the 277, so 36 responded that conducted immediately after school. 10 parents said, "Sure, but coordinate transportation prior," and that was a late bus or carpooling. Eight parents, a combo of before and after, so some before, some after, maybe ensembles with chorus before and the others after. Six parents suggested substituting ensemble for general music. 24 parents suggested extending the school day as part of a solution to it. And eight parents said that they should protect the core academics in that it should be held outside of the school day all the time. Again, look at that number here, out of 277, not compelling. So the teacher survey was also interesting to take a look at. So 100% of the teachers supported the ensemble outside the school day, and most felt that it should not be reinserted in the day. So there's, there's your tension, right? So you got, you got parents, and you got teachers of music that want it as part of the day, and then classroom teachers and others are saying it should be outside of the school day, and there's some reasons, which we'll go into. Teachers use the block of time for more math, ELA, social studies, or science. One of the things that teachers cited is their lack of instructional time, and their frustration around lack of instructional time. And even though they may have only gotten 45 minutes or 90 minutes per week, depending on what they're teaching and where their kids are, they really saw that as a huge increase. One of the issues that they mentioned too was that 20% of the students do not participate in ensemble, so, you know, what do you do then for those kids? And they've been, they've been doing silent reading and doing some other stuff in the library, so that was something that, that teachers were concerned about. You know, and here's a sign of the times, the edivow piece. So there were teachers that both, in the focus groups, that articulated the fact that, "Okay, so now we have a new edivow system, and as a component of that edivow system, you're accountable for student achievement. So if I don't have enough time in my day to do what I need to do with kids and enough instruction time, then I'm gonna be held accountable for that, then I have a problem." So that was kind of an issue that they had brought up, but that is, that is a sign of the times, not Medfield, that's a sign of the times statewide, that people are feeling anxious about the edivow piece and the amount of lack of time in their school day. And then there was a piece on additional planning, not every student, there were some teachers that took it upon themselves to do additional planning for some of those students that may not participate in the ensembles, and that was seen as something that was frustrating for them. So there are other sections of the study, but I'm not gonna go through all that, but they were, they're kinda interesting to read. The other ensemble models, so just to highlight a couple of those, there were 10 districts chosen, nine responded. Seven out of the nine districts had ensembles within the school day, only need them in Acton, Boxborough, or outside. And then, I talked to Doug about this, I had never heard about this, and it doesn't sound like it makes sense, but he said that the Midwest and Texas, I guess having success with it, but it just goes against what you would normally think. So the Midwest-Texas model is, is you eliminate all instruction with instruments in elementary school, which kinda goes counter to what you think would be the best practice. And then you do heavy, intensive daily instruction from middle school and high school. So Lexington was looking at that, that, I said to Doug, I don't know how that, I don't know how that works, that doesn't seem to make much sense. If we're trying to push so much down to elementary, because we know that when kids start younger at skill sets, they get better as they get older, why would you take that away and have someone too intensive? But I guess there's some research out there that says it works, so, not something we're ever gonna consider, I don't think, but just wanted to put it out there, is that something Lexington's doing. The need for more time, especially for science in the new standards that Kim had mentioned earlier, so there was a section in the report that talks about the fact that we don't have a really coordinated science curriculum in elementary school in Medfield, and that our MCAS scores, which we know is a snapshot, but, you know, it tells a story that we're not achieving as we should in science at the elementary level, and it was compared to the state. And when you take the state numbers, and statewide, the advance is higher than our advanced, then that doesn't jive, because certainly when, we've talked about MCAS here at this level, that we should be well above state in everything, we just really should. So, you know, some, a part that, that he- So, you know, some, a part that, that, that he talked about was other curriculum issues and, and also instructional time, you know, those types of issues that have come out. So, you know, you can look at the report, I didn't want to go through every single part of that, but some interesting parts that were added into the report to, to show that, you know, maybe we need to look at the instructional time as a whole. So these are the three recommendations that came out of the study. Elementary instructional time in future years needs expansion to be at least as robust like districts, perhaps even more robust to help accommodate the music program expectations. So if you look, Needham did a study three years ago, it's three years ago. And they were looking at extending their day. And one of the things they did is they took a look at all the Ed collaborative tech communities, which we're always compared to. And there were two districts that were really, really low and it was Dover, Sherwin, and it was us in terms of elementary. And you look at other districts that have literally hundreds of hours of more instruction a year compared to Medfield. And we've talked about the fact that prior to, just a couple of years ago, we, we got to where we needed to be in terms of that, that time because we were even below the state recommendations on that. So that, it was something that we really need to consider. And we've been talking about it all year as part of the, the extended day program, the extended school day program in that committee. Ensemble rehearsals should be reinstated during the school day. And that effective scheduling needs to take place carefully to build in instructional academic blocks with minimal interruption. That's really a key piece too, is that if you, and this is a frustration that teachers had that you may only have, and I think I've shared it here too at a meeting, that one teacher at Dale Street told me at one point last year, not this current year, she only had her entire class on Mondays for 45 minutes because they were all doing all these other things. And, you know, some of the things, we, we need to make sure that teachers have this uninterrupted time to work with kids. And we look at scheduling and you take those math blocks, you take the 60 minutes of math and you take the 120 minutes of language arts writing and put those in first and then work around those. But some of the challenges we have with that, we share so many staff at Dale Street especially, that, that becomes problematic because every change that is made at Dale Street impacts Blake or impacts Memorial or impacts Weelar. So I mean, that's, that's a challenge for us. And, you know, we could, we could certainly go to a model where we have building specific people, but we have a lot of part-time people. So the reason why we share so many is, is have FTEs and have people working. But sometimes who's going to, who wants to stay at a job if you're only going to be .6 instead of full-time? You know, it doesn't make any sense. So you have to take a look at that model and see if we can do, do it differently. I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can. So those are some of the, you know, certainly recommendations that we need to consider. So as I say, report a lot of data now what. So what we're looking at, and Kim and Doug and I have looked at this and, you know, this is what we're going with this year and we think for next year. I think it's, it's really a positive thing. So taking ensembles and putting them back into the school day. So clearly an opportunity for better attendance. I mean, you saw the data beforehand, it's kind of hard to do it. And, you know, I went to all but one of the concerts this year and they still pulled it together. But, you know, it's, it's frustrating if you're a teacher and you don't have your entire group there each time. So we certainly recognize that. Creates a much-needed common planning time for teachers. You know, so we're going to look at having kids, when the kids are doing ensemble, have that particular grade level working together in common planning time, which they've never had before. So that, that's a really good model that Kim and Doug are working on right now. And I think it's, it's going to work and pay dividends for kids because they're going to be able to do some of the work that we want them to do and they want to do, but they don't have time to do that during the day. Students involved in music lessons for band and orchestra will not take general music because they learn those standards through the lessons in ensemble. Students not involved in band and orchestra will have general music. So that means the chorus kids, so if you're in chorus in your ensemble, you'll still get that. So this gives us an opportunity for most kids to experience music two periods a week, which is what is important, is to make sure the kids can do that. You know, staffing wise, Doug has done a real nice job with looking at Barber's role and doing more lessons because we do have some big classes and lessons. When those classes were cut in 12 and 13, it created bigger classes for, for instruments. So we're trying to make sure that we can balance that out so that we have a more manageable group there. So Barber's going to help out with that. And then also offset, you know, we still need to have general music, just not as many of the classes. One of the things that we're looking at, and this is kind of going to be tricky. We may have to add an additional music person, say .2, to do that, to make this work. And we looked at the finances and because some of our hiring, they're coming in, we budget masters five for, for new becoming teachers, we hired some folks that aren't there yet. So we have some savings in some of those so far. So if we're able to do this, we'll be able to pull it off financially. But once we figure this out in terms of the scheduling, it looks like we'll have to have a .2 in there to, to help out the general music piece. That'll, that'll be a change for us. So questions, comments?
I'm just curious, how do you hire, you know, .2 general music or does that just you borrow from another one of the schools or?
No, we'll, we'll hire someone else outside because no one else, we have no other, other people that have any time. Maybe Keith knows somebody, I don't know. We have to, we have to hire someone because we're just, everyone else is.
I mean, but you can hire somebody for .2?
Yeah.
They could fill other positions, right? Like they could be a full-day sub or they could do other things with the rest of their day.
Sure, but we wouldn't hire them full-time.
No, I understand.
You know, but we would, we're trying to make it so that it's, it's one full day or two half-days so that.
That's just an hour a day.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Makes sense.
Has this been introduced to the teachers? Because if you said 100%.
Kim, Kim did mention that to the teachers at, at a staff meeting. I mean, I think the, the positive piece is.
Were they placated with a common planning time? Were they psyched about that?
They were excited.
So that was a lesser of two evils, so to speak, on their part?
They were excited about the common planning time.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And I mean, and I feel that they're very supportive of the music program. So I think this is a great.
Yeah, I agree.
Just, I'm just curious. I had, I've had, you know, four kids go through Dale now. The first three went through and it was just strings in fourth grade. And then when my last one went through, now it's band in fourth grade. I'm just wondering, I guess that change was made in 2012.
2012, right.
Yeah, so like why did all of a sudden we push the band down to fourth grade?
I mean, I think that was a goal of the district to do that. You know, I, I talked to Doug and actually last year he and I talked about it. And, you know, I, I think they want to try it out and see, but if it got such a great response, then, you know, it makes sense to, to have it in there. But yeah, that is fairly new.
Right, and just because of the timing is such a problem. And then adding like the foreign language in the same year when they added the band down to the fourth grade. It was kind of like.
Right.
Perfect storm of scheduling nightmare.
No question about it.
Yeah.
I just want to point out that I was not there that year.
Yeah, I know.
If I could just add my two cents on that. What I see, because I, my daughter was trying to choose an instrument for Dale next year. And I, I mean, not to be biased, but I'm, I am biased towards the string. So I keep trying to influence the violin and, and so she's like, I want to play the saxophone. And I feel like when the kids are doing, they're kind of switching. Like I, you know, I could picture, let's try the saxophone, let's try this. And there's not that kind of consistent commitment to one thing. And I don't know if that's necessarily the goal of Doug or the district. But I feel like if you're, if you're bouncing around and you never kind of stick with something and become committed to that instrument, there's more likelihood that you might just get frustrated if you're always learning something new and just be like, oh, forget it, I'm, I'm going to drop all this.
But I think, you know, we look at the band numbers. You still have higher numbers of band, you know, compared to.
Than the orchestra.
Orchestra. You see that definitely lower numbers in orchestra.
But because you added the band in 2012, like the, I bet the orchestra numbers obviously dipped significantly when you introduced the option of taking all the instruments in fourth.
Yeah, I, I think that the point is there was something attractive about, as an entire community, fourth graders took. But, you know, and sort of not, not in the same way because of very different instruments, but in the same way, you know, our younger kids all do recorder. Fourth graders take violin, that's their introduction to more mature music, a more mature music program before they then have an opportunity to kind of branch out into other things.
I guess my impression back then, when my older kids were going through, was that they weren't quite ready for band. And maybe that was just what we were kind of told, you know? Like your only option was going to be violin in the fourth grade and then.
Some of those communities that I showed you, they start band in third grade.
They do, okay. So they're, the kids are ready for it, it's not bad, it's just.
And it was, it was some point, and I forget where it is in the report, but there was something in there that said, third grade parents have mentioned that many of them, a high percentage already have their kids in private lessons prior to getting to fourth grade. So I think there's something out there that, that folks want that and are paying for it.
Yeah, so I've learned more about the elementary school day schedule this year than I think. Having had three kids go through the system, I've learned in the last 10 years. So this, I thought this report was done very well. My thought, you know, and it clearly shows that the culprit in all this is the elementary day and just not being long enough. And I think, you know, we're taking steps to try to address that and find the right balance for that. But I think, you know, when we, when, when we hired the superintendent, we hired him to focus. One of his primarily, one of his priorities was going to be the elementary schools. And I think, you know, I commend him for kind of, whether this kind of went off in a way that everyone would have liked in the very beginning or not.
Didn't walk where I wanted to go on here, so.
I do commend you for taking on, and you could hear it even in all the school improvement plans, taking on issues that were in the elementary school day that you didn't, you, you know, you inherited as much as obviously as anything. So this, whether it was painful to get here or not, I think brought out a lot of the stuff that needs to be discussed in the district and as we, especially as we move into a strategic planning initiative. I also think that I commend you for taking a process-driven approach to finding a solution to this. It was not done, and it could have been, I think, given the emotions that surrounded the issue, it could have been done with less process and less analysis. It came to a conclusion that I think reinforces, at least from my perspective, and I think the other members of the committee share it, a, you know, an appreciation for the importance of music in Medfield. But also recognizes that we have critical issues related to the elementary school day that need to be balanced with that. So I think it's a creative solution that you did. You know, that you took the information and came up with a, a solution that was creative. And I think actually ended up giving us sort of a win-win, got us both the music but the common planning time, which I know is something that teachers have been talking about. And obviously it only makes sense that that's something that they felt strongly about. So I just think that as far as I'm concerned, this is a good process. This came to a solution that I support. I know it's not really something that we're going to vote on as a committee, but I certainly support it. I'm looking forward to how the strategic plan develops further, the elementary school day issue, which is so important and how we do deal with the root cause of where this is, you know, what caused it. So, you know, I commend you for, for living through a difficult year and getting to the, what I think is the right solution for.
I absolutely agree. And I, I really think that we have to keep looking at the school day issue because it's concerning to me. I'm glad that we have music twice a week, I really am. And I think twice is appropriate, but it's concerning that we only have science twice a week and social studies twice a week. And maybe sometimes not even that much. So I think we have to keep looking at it and hopefully going forward, we can, I think probably, extend the school days might be the right answer.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a process, no doubt about it. But I think it's really, I mean, the feedback that, and Tim had mentioned, the feedback that I got from so many teachers and from you folks and the data that I looked at from the superintendent's search, it was clear that there, there needed to be some movement in elementary in terms of the day and what happens and the fragmentation and all. I mean, it's, so we're not there yet, but we needed to kind of bring some stuff to the surface and just kind of go out a little bit. So certainly.
Good first pass.
Yeah.
Getting there.
Yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there.
I just wanted to second that too. I think you did a great job handling this and very professional the whole time, which is what we were looking for in a superintendent when we originally did the search. So I think you went about it in a, in a great way and made Medfield very proud of the way you handled the situation that could have gone awry multiple times. And I think this is, like Tim said, I think it's a very creative solution. But I'm also a little bit fearful that, you know, that we stay on track, that I'm, I am very concerned. Although I have my kids in the ensembles, I love the music program. But I think when people, when I've told people this year that we didn't have a math curriculum for elementary school, people, you know, were shocked. I said, we haven't had a math curriculum, these people have been working on it for years, we don't have that. And I can't tell you the number of people that came to me and said, then why are we fighting about music ensembles? Like we didn't take them away. And I, you know, I just want some of those academic issues and the things that we send our kids to the Medfield public schools in addition to music to stay in, in the forefront of people's mind that we still don't have a science curriculum. We are implementing a new math curriculum. And when your children are in those schools, it's very big and it's very noticeable that some of these things aren't happening. And the frustration level of the teachers when they don't have those programs is palpable. You know, you can tell when they're frustrated because, you know, there's been some lack of consistency. And although we're making huge strides, I think that that has to stay in the forefront of, of people's agendas, so.
So one of the things that I've come across and it's a little bit of the culture in town, you know, so I'm just, I'm kind of working with it a little bit. But there, there is a, a culture here, not everywhere, but there, there's, there's a culture here where it's okay, they'll catch up at high school.
Yeah, no.
And I've heard that a lot from, from folks. And I think that what people need to understand, I think, from my perspective, is that when you have an extremely strong, high-achieving elementary schools, then it just gets even better at middle and high school. It really does. And it's not because people aren't working hard, it's not because they're bad people. It's because, you know, instead of working together to do a common assessment, they're trying to decide, they're going to try to make up a test for the next day because they have no materials to do it. So it's, I get their frustration because my first pass of the budget when I got here, I was fairly frustrated the fact that we spent more money, and again, I'm not putting a department down, I'm just giving an example, that we spend more money in, in family consumer science for supplies and materials than we do in all three elementary schools together in math. So that's, that's, that's frustrating to me. So I think that's one of the things that we're trying to, trying to work out and make sure that we get that all even because we need to get that foundation really, really strong because it's only going to help the upper, upper levels. I mean, the teachers at Blake and, and the high school will tell you, there's not magic fairy dust that they put on people and, and all of a sudden the kids get it. I mean, there's still a lot of work done at the middle school and high school. But certainly it gets even better when other schools are doing. It's, and you've heard me say this before, that we have to be five, we're a school district, we're not one school. So we need to make sure that all five schools are doing really, really well. And that's kind of what you have me here for. Any other questions, comments? And we're getting up to the, oh, we're at, sorry guys.
Right. Do you want to stay up there and do the FY, you're doing the FY15 closeout from up there?
Michael's going up there.
I have to apologize, but I'm the culprit that Chris is trying to manage the meeting for. I have to be home for a conference call at 10 o'clock, so excuse me.
We're in the process of closing out fiscal year 15. Today we closed out access to Munis, which is our financial database for the school staff for fiscal year 15, and opened up fiscal year 16 access to school staff. We ran the first training session for requisition entry and financial reporting to content specialists. And our second session will be held on June 24th for the rest of the staff, which is principals and secretaries. On June 18th, the final fiscal year 15 payroll will be paid out to all staff except for teachers that opted to be paid throughout the summer, which is the 26th pay schedule. In the next few weeks, we will be reviewing all outstanding encumbrances and contacting vendors for final outstanding invoices. July 2nd will be the first payroll for fiscal year 16. July 7th will be the final vendor warrant for fiscal year 15 and final encumbrances for utilities that are due in June but not invoiced until July. Town Independent Auto will be back in the town sometime at the end of June. We're going to get our final request and then they'll come back in the fall to actually complete the fiscal year 15. actually complete the fiscal year 15 final audit. On July 13th, there'll be a workshop with, uh, Department of Early and Secondary Education on the end-of-year financial report. July 14th will be the first fiscal year 16 vendor warrant, and then, um, on July, in July sometime, the mass teachers' retirement is coming in to audit, um, our payroll. Five communities out of 365 school districts were selected, and we were one of the five to be selected.
All the time.
And then, at the end, at the end-of-year fi- financial report will be submitted to Department of Early and Secondary Education sometime, uh, by the end of September. So, we have a busy, busy summer.
This is the time of year when warrants kind of starting to back up, and I think Tim has been getting them signed, but...
Yes.
If you're around town and can help, especially during the summer, I would, you know, let's be in constant contact with Tim because they start, those, they, they really need to be timely at the, through, through the end of June.
Correct, okay. Any questions?
There's enough money to pay the bills to get through the rest of the year? You buried the lead on that.
That's the goal.
All right. Uh, we do have one other action I want, which we need to have a vote, which we skipped over just in the interest of time, so we'll, uh, Dr. Marzen will jump back to donations.
Sure. Um, I have a couple of donations for your approval. $227.54 for the Blake Middle School gift account from Stop &amp; Shop School Rewards Program, and $275.99 for Wheelock School gift account, uh, also from the Stop &amp; Shop Rewards Program. I asked you to approve those.
There is no motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved with our thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Marzen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have, um, in terms of the Wheelock boiler update, nothing new, we're still working through, um, all of the different regulations with MSBA, and we're still hoping that, that process will start with the removal of the boilers, et cetera, in mid-July. Um, so that's, that's still our timeline, and I'll be able to give you an updated timeline in August when we meet again, and certainly I'll shoot you emails to let you know how it's going, but that's where we are right now with that, um, not, not a lot, nothing too exciting at this point.
Okay.
Um, and then, just if I could, uh, I, as you know, I've been meeting with, on the construction meetings every Wednesday morning with the, the Dale Street parking lot, and that's still going on schedule. Uh, they told me last Wednesday that, uh, they're looking at a completion date of the third week in July and be all done with everything. So they've really been doing a great job there.
Parking lot.
What's that?
All done with everything in the parking lot.
The parking lot, right. Which, as I said last week, was a lot, a lot more involved than I thought.
Yeah.
Uh, but they've been great, and they've been, like I said, flexible with, with us and, and, uh, letting us know when they're going to be doing noisy things, and they'll, they'll move that to later in the day, earlier in the morning, they've been great with that, so, um, that's all I have with that. And then, just in terms of recognition, I just got a text before the meeting started, our girls are in the state championship, uh, state semifinals and lost against Norwell lacrosse, our boys, um, lost on Saturday for baseball, and then our boys' lacrosse team is playing tomorrow night in Norwell against Hingham, so we wish them all the best. It's an exciting time for those kids.
Yes, great.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
That's all I have. Okay. This is the part of the meeting we set aside for public input.
Jerry Potts, um, so I do want to commend the, the end result of the process, I, I think the, I read the presentation online, and I think there's some great information there. Um, I, I, I do feel that the process was more painful for everyone involved than it needed to be, and, and I agree with that. When we look at math and science in the elementary school and we say music and time were the problems, and we're setting up music versus academics, I, I don't see those as, as competitions. I think study after study shows that music enhances education, that it provides support, you know, and it's no coincidence that many of our valedictorians have also been outstanding musicians. Um, I, I think the frustration of not having a math curriculum and a science curriculum, anyone who looks at that, Marion, I agree with you, it's shocking. When the first conclusion is to mu- move music to before school, I think that was a wrong conclusion. I think getting a math curriculum, we're proud of that, I think the science curriculum scares the heck out of me that that's lingering into two years from now. Um, and I, I think to a large degree this pitted a community against each other that it didn't need to be that way. So, um, you know, the conclusion to this is great, I think it made Dr. Marzen's job incredibly difficult to have this much division in the community, and I still am concerned that the discussion is music versus academics, um, and that somehow having an ensemble during the day is going to ruin our math and science scores when we don't, haven't had a math curriculum and we haven't had a science curriculum. I think anyone who would look at that would say that would be the first place you'd go, and adding more time in the day to study something that doesn't have a curriculum that aligns with the Common Core is a problem. So, giving 45 minutes more without a curriculum that aligns is, to me, the biggest issue. We're addressing it with the math, that's great, I think the science thing is terrifying, that we don't have, the same thing we just did with the math, we don't have queued up for much sooner. So, uh, I'm a little agitated in the discussion, I felt great until the last round of discussion on it where it went back to a discussion of music or science, you know, let's pick sides on which you are. I, I think we excelled as a community academically with a great music program for years, and we had problems at the principal level, and we had problems with a curriculum that didn't align, and we made music the scapegoat, and I think that was wrong, and I think it created a lot of tension in the community that didn't need to happen. So, um, I commend the conclusion to it, um, I don't agree the process was as good as it could have been, but I think the end result is great, and I, I think we learned from that process, but I, I was great until the very end when I heard, again, music versus academics, and if, at the end of this, that was the last comment, I, I, I'm, I'm agitated, that's why I'm so, uh, I, I can't believe after this entire process we ended up again with, "Well, I'm worried about science because of music." I don't get that, I just don't get that. We can do both, and, uh...
I think people are just worried about the time of school day, Jerry.
It is, but I worry we don't have a science curriculum.
Oh, I agree.
And I worry we didn't have a math curriculum, and, and we moved music before doing this very thoughtful thing we just did, and I commend Dr. Marzen again. I think this process was thoughtful, was outstanding, was well-executed, I think the results, I read them, it, it was wonderful, so thank you for that outreach. But that's what Chris asked in November that we should have done last spring. Get a group of the community together, get the teachers involved, that was the only ask that took place, and we got there, and, and at the end, that's all that really matters for the kids and, and for the music program. But I just think it created a lot more, you know, divisiveness in the community than it needed to, and, you know, I'm frustrated with that because, uh, we can do both of these things. And the people who advocated for music were, you know, were, I, I, I won't get into the full thing, I'm sure the folks thought that the music program was attacking their music advocates, that's their job, right? They were making a case advocating for the music program, and I don't think this would have happened, this great conclusion, unless they did, to be honest. Um, so I commend the Music Association and the Music Parents, I commend Dr. Marzen for an outstanding end result, I think he did a great job at the end with, and, and also the, this committee, I think, did a great job, um, in the end, but I just, I was feeling great about it until the very end, and then we go back to, but, science and art, they go together, and high-achieving communities are doing this all over the place, so let's find a way to do that together as opposed to pitting groups against each other, I just, anyway, let's...
Thanks, Chair. Anybody else?
Chris McPhee-Potts, I just had, actually, just a question out of a clarification, um, in terms of the donation, um, recognition that you do, in terms of what the, what is the timing for when you need to get that report? Michael, did you get my email that had the MMA, the Music Association?
I did, I'm, I'm working on closeouts right now.
Okay.
Haven't had a chance to even...
Okay.
Look at it. Um, we, usually what happens is, depending on the organization, they give it to us monthly, so that's why it's on the agenda. Uh, we get a monthly letter from different organizations.
Okay.
Um, I will review yours as soon as I do all my closeouts.
Okay.
So it'll probably be on the agenda for August.
Okay, that's great, good to know. I just, um, I didn't know, I know I had asked for clarification on that process when this was starting, and I didn't really, didn't really understand in terms of what the timing, the timeline should be for that, would be good to know. Um, you know, it's, it's, the music program is very unique in terms of the way we do, we work very much in partnership with the music department, and we allocate a certain number, amount of money to them for the year. A lot of times in past years, they have not spent all that money, so we didn't want to be reporting money that wasn't going to be spent, um, for example, like accompanists at choral concerts, um, a lot of times we'll have students that will end up being accompanists, and we don't need, they don't need to spend that money, and that money ends up getting really reallocated. So, we're trying to be accurate with, with our own accounting to show you exactly where the money was spent, um, and just for, you know, public record, it ended up being right around, um, I think about $27,000 for this past year, um, that the MMA gave back to the school in terms of contributions. Um, I, I think the other, the rea- the other reason I was a little confused was that the Coalition did their presentation, it wasn't on like the official agenda, so I figured I might have a little bit more wiggle room with trying to give you, you know, information that you guys could approve tonight, but it's good to know for future reference what that timing is, so I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, future agenda items, we've got a lot, but they're not up until August, so we can't do that, so, we'll go around the horn.
Um, I don't have anything, just good luck to the boys tomorrow.
Um, I just have one more thing, um, Richard DeSorger came, um, last week or a couple weeks ago, I can't remember now, um, and was talking about the whole civic education, and this was the first year that the third graders didn't do their tour around Medfield, um, and I actually spoke to Richard at the state hospital meeting because I personally was bummed out about it. My other two kids had done it, and every time we go around Medfield, they'll point out different things that they learn. It's a great, um, tradition that we have in Medfield, that the kids do that in third grade, and unfortunately with Richard's schedule, he wasn't able to fit it in with the school, um, but we talked about maybe doing something, and I don't know, it could be on the agenda in the fall, that would combine the third and fourth grade, because if he does have time to reinstitute it, then that would be the only class that has kind of missed out on that opportunity. You know, they go to the Peak House, they learn all these, they go into Town Hall, and I think that whole idea of, um, civil service starts very young, you kind of plant the seeds and they, you know, get into these different places, and it's just a great trip around their town.
Richard did that for me when I first got here.
Yeah. I think Richard needs an apprentice is the problem, because he's not always available.
Right, well, he has had, um, students do it, or that will help him out, and, and this year there wasn't any of that, so it was really unfortunate, and unfortunately it came on the heels of him coming in here and talking about how we need to be more civic-minded in the education process, um, and then that opportunity was lost for the third grader, so I'm hoping that he will work with the schools, um, and do something, third and fourth combined, or the third grade and the fourth graders that will be at Dale Street combined, and hopefully they won't lose out on that opportunity because I think it's important.
Chris, good point.
Um, I just have a couple of things, the eighth graders, uh, the cohort of the eighth graders who are finishing up their, I think their third year Mandarin, took a trip into Chinatown and got to really explore, and I had a great time, and I just appreciate that, uh, they had that opportunity to really utilize their language skills. Um, Friday night, there was a, a cast party, which seems like really late considering when the productions went on, but, but I just really want to thank the parents in particular who put that together for all the middle school kids who participated in the drama programs this year, um, and of course Tracy Allen was there again all hours of the night, so, um, she always is. Um, and then finally, with respect to the science curriculum, Jeff, will you just talk about it, because, you know, pedagogically speaking, it's always been the case that you have a structured math curriculum and a structured language arts curriculum, but science and social studies have been, um, less amenable to structured, sort of off-the-shelf programs, and I think that's part of the reason we haven't had them, so that's why, you know, I, I think it would be a misnomer to say that we don't have a science curriculum, we certainly have a science curriculum, what we don't have is an off-the-shelf program like the...
We don't have a program.
...innovation's 2.2, 2.0 kind of program, right, right.
So, there's, um, there's off-the-shelf curriculum, as you said, that are structured in kits so that you take the different standards or whatever topics, the particular grade, which are going to be all new, um, starting next year, which is another reason why we're waiting, because the new national standards come out, and they're different in some grade levels. And you, you have a kit for each one of the topics, so if it is, um, technology in terms of the invention piece, not technology with computer, so that type of technology in grade five, then there's a whole kit that's a six-week unit that deals just with that, and that's the part we're missing is that particular piece, so we need to, we need to look at getting, one of the great ones is FOS kits, they're called, they're spectacular. Um, we need to take a look at some of those and see whether, um, teachers can, can implement that in a real good way, because I think that, I've seen it work real successful in other places, and, you know, if our teachers are spending all this time creating, 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 and there's one already done there for them that they can work with their peers on, I mean, that's what we're looking for. So it's, it's just really changing the focus in time allocation to doing stuff with collaboration and with kids versus creating everything, which is what they've been doing for an awful long time.
But is there a short-term Band-Aid solution to, to, you know, that wouldn't cost tens of thousands of dollars to, to alleviate some of the, you know, I mean...
But a Band-Aid suggests there's a, there's a wound, right.
There's definitely gaps.
Well, how, we're going to wait three years for a new science program?
Well, you got to look at the, we're not going to, so here's another way we could do it, we could get one of those right now, and then all the national standards come out, they're not aligned for the nationals, it's like Common Core, right? So they, we had to wait a little bit for, for mathematics because it needed to be aligned with the Common Core, and there were no programs out there that did that, as Kim had mentioned last week.
Right.
So now we have the new s- national standards coming out for science that are, are much more rigorous and topic-based, that may not align with what we're doing right now. So we need to kind of wait till that comes out and then go from there.
But we do have a full science curriculum that's fully aligned to the existing frameworks.
Yeah, of course, of course, no, I know, I've had my kids go through the school, but I see the handwritten tests.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, most of the teachers get together and they say, "Okay, what are the standards we're teaching here?"
Yeah, right.
So this would alleviate kind of, you know, the, the battle, because there is no battle, we're one team, and if we help them...
It shouldn't, it shouldn't matter what teacher you get in any particular grade level, the experience should be very similar.
Right, but it has, and, but that has been the case.
So that's, that's what the consist, you kept hearing that tonight, that's the focus on consistency so that you have, um, consistent experience, educational experiences, no matter what class you may go in. It's not cookie cutter, but it's consistent, and we can't have, um, kids in one class doing one thing and kids in another class doing something totally different. It just, it just can't be that way.
But even without a, even without an off-the-shelf program, it's, that's the goal of common planning time? That's, that's the theory.
Yeah, exactly, yes, 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 yes.
That's what I had. Is there a motion to, or did anybody else have any, we're good? Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Oh, one more thing, sorry.
You, I often...
I know, I know, I have my note right here, and I forgot to read my note. So, the, the district-wide survey that we've talked about is going to be launched this week.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to send it, an email to parents, let them know that they're going to get an email from Panorama Education, asking them to participate. Uh, one of the things that we talked about in leadership is that, um, because we're going to disaggregate this information by school, we want folks to do one for each one of their children, so I'm not sure, that's going to be kind of, you know...
I've seen that begging to get people to do that just for, are you bringing an iPad next year, so?
I know, so that, that's going to be difficult, I think, so we're just going to see how folks respond to that.
Okay.
Uh, but we're, we're looking at, um, the Panorama and, and the leadership team really felt that in order to get a true sense of what folks are talking about, we need to get it disaggregated by school, which I agree with, but that then makes folks have to do one for each child.
And this does, um, so this is a predicate to the...
Strategic plan.
Strategic planning process.
Right, right. So we have a couple of questions, this is all validated and, and reliable based on an assessment developed at Harvard School of Education. We, we took some of the scales and didn't like them, they didn't fit us, so we picked, we, meaning the leadership team and I, picked the ones that we thought were, were most meaningful, and we did a few open response, and then we added a few of our own, like for instance,[1749.11]